Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I'm a pastor, so I need a little bit of feedback. Good evening, everyone. So happy to have everybody here on tonight. We are excited to be able to host this Stronger Together Town Hall meeting with NAACP. And our first, what I wanted you to do is give yourself a round of applause for being here. Can you do that? One of the things I've been telling people is that here in our great city, Altona Pasadena, that our secret weapon is unity. And so we are excited. I want to be the first to welcome you to this town hall. And I want to give a special thank you to our president of NAACP National, President Derrick Johnson. Thank you for being here, sir, and to the whole team that's here tonight. But any further ado, I want to get this started right away. On behalf of our church, Victory Bible Church, we thank you all for being here. I want to present to you now President Derrick Johnson. Please receive him as he comes.
Good evening. Wouldn't... We seen the tragedy of the fire on the news. And I'm one of the people, I have not really watched news since the elections. Guess why? And I began to think about Hurricane Katrina. And for those of you who may have remembered that natural disaster some 15 years ago, some of us lived through it. And I recognize the urgency of the NAACP getting involved because immediately following Katrina, several things happened that I'm sure is taking place in this community. That the insurance company became more and more difficult to get in contact with. That people start showing up in the neighborhoods offering monies for your properties that you had never seen before. That there was a lot of information as relates to FEMA that was inaccurate. That there was tons of people raising money for the community. And you look up, you say, "Well, I'm the community. I ain't seen a dime of the money being raised." I have to use this one, too? Okay. That others came up who were overnight experts to begin to give advice. All of those things created a level of chaos. And I was on the Mississippi side of Hurricane Katrina, and it was three times worse in New Orleans. And in New Orleans, it became even worse because it was an issue of people who had to leave and they never came back, still to this day. And we decided as an organization, we wanted to do all we can to support this community because of the generational wealth that was created through homeownership, your ability to withstand this moment and come out stronger than ever, and to ensure you understood what you were entitled to, whether it was from FEMA, your insurance company, or what was legally required for you to access entities that were accountable for causing the fire. And so we decided to partner with the law firm because we knew predatory lawyers would be coming to this community seeking to charge 40% of whatever you got and all kinds of the bad stuff. And so that's why the NAACP National Office, we are here to help with that recovery. Plus, the Image Awards Show was filmed from here, and we could not come in next month doing a show celebrating it with all of what has taken place in this community. And so we are proud to partner with Singleton Schreiber. We are pleased that we will have staff on the ground working with FEMA so you know what you're entitled to. And we are prepared to fight both insurance companies and the bank if they try to foreclose prematurely. So that's why we are here as an organization. I'm the national president of the NAACP, and we are structured where we have a state and a local. And I want to welcome Rick Calendar, who is the president of the California Hawaii State Conference, who is also here to assist in this moment. Rick?
Thank you, President Johnson, and good evening. I wish I could be greeting you on behalf of the 57 branches of the California Hawaii State Conference at a different time. I wish it wasn't when there was so much sadness and sorrow from what has happened. I'm sincerely troubled by what I've seen. And I just want you to know that the California Hawaii State Conference and the NAACP, we're going to do everything that we can legislatively with the state assembly, with the state senate, with the governor's office to ensure that we can get your homes rebuilt. We can do it quickly, and people can move back on the ground. That's a priority for us. I look out in the crowd, and I see everybody that looks just like me. I'm going to tell you, we're not going to abandon communities of color. We're not going to abandon the African-American community. We're going to stand there with you, and we're going to be fighting with you. I'm going to go ahead and introduce our new president. I'm going to tell you, it's a blessing to have this brother. I've had a chance to spend all day with him. But the president of the Pasadena branch, Brandon Lamar. Brandon?
All right. We're going to get this figured out. Hey, family, how you doing? Hey, family, how you doing? I'm from here, so we family, born and raised, and I ain't went nowhere yet. If you have been victimized from this fire, can you just stand? I think it's important for people to see. If you're not standing, just look around you. These are just families that is in this room. We have a long haul ahead of us. And I have made, thank you, guys, I have made a commitment to our city. I have made a commitment to, especially to African-Americans and marginalized communities in our city, that we will do everything within our power to make sure that we have all the resources that we need to make sure you rebuild here in Pasadena. I've said this before this morning, and I'm going to say it again, Altadena is not for sale. So if you are here, if you're watching, and you think we're going to allow you to come into our community and take what is ours for pennies on the dollar, it's not going to happen. Our community's already been reaching out, people have already been reaching out to families since day one of the fire. They have no respect. But I'm telling you now that we're doing every single thing within our power to make sure that you have the ability to build here. At the end of the day, GoFundMe is not enough. For a lot of people, the insurance won't be enough. So we want to make sure that we make sure that dollars come here, not only from a local level, a state level, but a national level, so that we can rebuild this community and make it better than ever. We literally had a meeting with our governor earlier today. And he, after our meeting, he went to sign a bill for $2.5 billion that will come down to our communities to make sure that we have the resources that we need. So I promise you, from a person that is here, from a person whose family is from Altadena, from a person that grandparents built their church in Altadena and went to school in Altadena, Edison Elementary, where I went, is gone. Elliott Middle School that I went to is gone. I will make sure that we do whatever we can to make sure we're come back stronger than ever. God bless you. Thank you so much.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Mike, Mike? Here we go. Can you hear me now? Good evening, everyone. We're going to transition over now into the town hall portion of this session this evening. As you heard from President Johnson, President Calendar, and President Lamar, NAACP is in this with you all. And so for our first speakers this evening, we'll bring up Mr. Curtis Brown, federal coordinating officer for FEMA, to talk about some of the work that FEMA is already coordinating here on the ground in the Pasadena-Altadena area. Curtis?
Thank you. My name is Curtis Brown, as mentioned. I'm the federal coordinating officer to oversee the disaster deployed here, January 9th. Been here since, and I'll be here probably for the next 50 weeks. Prior to deploying here, I deployed to Maui after their wildfires. I was a day after their wildfires, and I spent 50 weeks delivering FEMA programs to Maui. I'm not comparing Pasadena to Maui. I think the benefit of me deploying to Maui for 50 weeks, it gave me the insight to FEMA programs, so I can deliver those programs more efficiently to you. I have 26 years in the fire service. I retired in 2023 as the operations chief of CAL FIRE. So I've probably hiked every hill there is from the Oregon border to San Diego. I'm a native Temecula, so I live less than an hour and a half from here. So I'm here. I'm here for you. Currently, at the JFO that we have here in Pasadena, we have over 500 FEMA staff deployed to deliver the programs to you. We have 6,000 agents at our call centers to answer your questions by calling 1-800-621-3362. I think most importantly to me, though, is we have disaster survivor assistance teams. And those are personnel that are designed to surge at for events like this. So at a moment's notice, we can get up to three or four or more staff here to be able to meet you where you are anytime, anyplace that's requested. And they'll be here tonight, I think in the room back there. They'll be here after the town hall to answer questions. And then they also have flyers with more of the information. I brought some notes with me because it's important for me, want to get accurate information out to you, timely information out to you, and then provide you stats on some of the programs that we have, as well as the priorities that FEMA has in place now, which is first, delivering our individual assistance program to you because it's you have stable housing. And then also, the second priority is removing the hazardous household materials from your properties so that we could then remove the debris, which leads to you getting permits and rebuilding. I encourage no one to leave. Please don't leave, right? Just take it day by day and make a commitment to yourself to stay in your community. Let's see here. So to date, we have 106,000, over 106,000 folks that have registered for FEMA assistance. We've delivered $38.8 million to over 14,000 households. 4.3 of that is for housing assistance, repair, replacement, and rental assistance, and 34.4 million in other needs assistance. And 13.1 of that 34 million is for serious needs assistance. So that's at $770 that some of you may have gotten. We've been messaging, and you can tell by the numbers of 106,000 that have registered to apply for FEMA assistance. There's two grants available, up to $43,600 each. The first grant is for other needs assistance. So those are things for like personal property, medical and dental, transportation, funeral cost, and miscellaneous items that may have been in your house. The second grant, up to $43,600, is for repair, replacement, lodging expenses, and reimbursement from other things. For rental assistance, it does not count. If you get FEMA rental assistance, it doesn't count towards your grant. So if you got the max grant, which there's not a lot of folks get the max grant, but you're able to, by getting FEMA rental assistance, it doesn't count towards that. So it's not deducted for $43.6 if you got $43,600 if you qualified for that grant. And the continued rental assistance is for up to 18 months, given in three months increments. So that first check will be for two months. You come back to FEMA. If qualified, we'll give you a check for the next three months. And then that's up to 18 months. The state requested that FEMA activates its transitional sheltering program for displaced survivors. That program opened on January 14th. As of today, there's 1,678 households that have checked in to 146 hotels. That's 3,934 individuals. Majority of the occupied hotels are in LA County, followed by Orange County, San Bernardino, Ventura, and Kern County. FEMA's TSA program provides a temporary lodging to eligible survivors who are unable to return to their home due to the wildfires. Under this program, FEMA pays for the cost of room, taxes, and non-refundable pet fees directly to participating hotels. As I entered earlier, someone asked me about FEMA giving out vouchers for hotels. We don't give out vouchers for hotels. We contact you, offer that program to you, give you a number to check in at that hotel, and then that's how we lodge you there. So if there's a voucher that's given to you, most likely, it's not from FEMA. Survivors are responsible for all other costs, including laundry, restaurant, room service, parking, telephone, and movie rentals. TSA may also be available for those who have, with insurance for a limited time. So like I said before, you don't need to request this type of assistance. We'll contact you. As mandatory evacuations lift, we'll start to see a decline in our TSA program because there are folks in the TSA program that choose that program that were under a mandatory evacuation and obviously couldn't live in their house. And so with the evacuations lifted over the next couple of days, we'll start to see a decline in the TSA program. Applying for assistance, every head of household applied for FEMA assistance, not everyone that lives in that household. If you have, if you, you know, for instance, lived at 143 Fifth Street, and you were sublet a room out of there, and you have a lease for that, you may also apply for FEMA assistance. We know that the letters received by FEMA can be confusing. That's why we've taken your feedback, and we've applied clear language to those letters within the last week. And so as the letters start rolling out, coming out, you'll see there's much more clear language. Insurance, as we get this question a lot. If you were affected by the fires and have insurance, you should contact your homeowner's insurance first, right? Because your homeowner's insurance most likely have a line item there where they'll provide you funds for sheltering. And so we can't pay you money to shelter if your insurance company covers it for you. And so contact your insurance company first, utilize that money, then come back. Register for FEMA after you contact your insurance company. When that money runs out, come back to FEMA, and we'll be able to provide your assistance. Rumors and fraud. There's been a lot of rumors and scams after the disaster. If it sounds too good to be true, it probably is. We've activated an email, stopfemafraud@fema.dh.gov, or call 866-223-0814 to report fraud or scams. And we've also launched a webpage that you could reach at fema.gov, and then just search for rumors. Already mentioned the vouchers. There was also a rumor about FEMA covering 100% of individual costs. What the president said was he covered 100% of firefighting cost and debris removal, which includes reimbursement and provisions of federal resources for the local government and not individuals. Not 100% of impacted survivors' cost. The rumor regarding GoFundMe page, FEMA, when you register, we don't check to see if you have a GoFundMe page. But if it ever were known to FEMA that you had a GoFundMe page, for instance, we don't duplicate benefits. And so if you had a GoFundMe page regarding paying for a car that you lost in the fire, and then FEMA found out about it and gave you money to replace that car, that'd be considered a duplication of benefits. So don't be afraid to advocate, or don't pull down your GoFundMe page. I'd move forward with that because we don't check for GoFundMe pages when you register for FEMA. We have two disaster recovery centers open right now. One at UCLA Research Park West, and a mobile DRC at the Pasadena City College. And then as of yesterday, we're looking at it, we signed a lease on a new location about a half mile from here, 25,000 square feet. I'm going to have all those resources. If you've been to the disaster recovery center, one of the two that's open now, you can imagine 25,000 square feet, you get more resources there. I think there'll be a little transition between DRC 1, 2, and 3 being open all at the same time. And then depending on if the local county, state, or volunteer agencies can staff all three, then we'll staff all three. If not, they'll most likely have to triage whether or not to shut down number two. But that decision hasn't been made yet. As I said before, our primary responsibility now and our priority now is to get you stabilized and sheltered. The next priority is removing household hazardous materials. The state requested that FEMA remove all household hazardous materials from properties impacted by the fires. This is the first step in you rebuilding your home. We've directed the U.S. EPA to do this and allocated an initial $175 million to get them started. They will initially assemble up to 60 field teams, which equates to about 500 personnel. Over the last week, they've been conducting full assessments to determine the scope and scale of the HHM removal. We expect to begin removing HHM for both fires starting on Monday, the 22nd. So right now, over the last couple of days, they've been clearing the staging areas where they take all the hazardous material from your home and the lithium ion batteries. And like I said, they'll start removing, going on to properties on Monday, January 27th. And their mission truly is to reduce the threat of immediate hazards. The next step in the process is debris removal. The governor requested that FEMA remove all end dispose of debris and hazard trees from private properties burned by the wildfires on the 16th of January. And we approved that request on the 18th. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has been assigned, and we've allocated $550 million to that cause. The current estimate for the entire operation is estimated to be $2.5 billion for debris removal. All counties have opted in to the Army Corps removing the debris. And so, you know, you can reach out to your local elected leaders and thank them for that effort because I think they truly thought that by having the U.S. Army Corps remove the debris, it would expedite the permitting process for you. Okay, that's all I have. But in closing, you know, thank you, guys, for having FEMA here delivering factual information to you. Like I said earlier, it's important for me to be able to have staff here answer your questions. If you know of anyone that has or wants to host an event similar to this with impacted survivors, Brandon Munson's standing there. He'll be here till the end. Reach out to Brandon, and we'll get staff there for you anytime, like we've done tonight. We also have flyers here, disaster survivor assistance teams, to answer your questions in that room over there. Or Brandon, or Brandy, sitting over there. I'll be here to answer your questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dominic. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jeanette McCarthy Wallace, and I have the honor of being the general counsel for the NAACP. And to my immediate right is my colleague, Anthony Ashton, who was the senior general counsel for the NAACP. And in addition to Abrey Connor, Vice President Abrey Connor, we constitute the legal team for the Eaton Fire. Since 1909, the NAACP has been fighting for the rights of Black Americans. Through the involvement of the Office of General Counsel, we will do just that on behalf of those significantly and detrimentally affected by these fires. The NAACP and Singleton Schreiber are partnering to advocate for justice on behalf of the victims of the devastating Eaton Fire and the burning of Altadena. of the devastating Eaton Fire and the burning of Pasadena. This collaboration marks a significant step in addressing the tragic loss of life, property, and livelihoods. This collaboration will also focus on raising awareness of the disproportionate impacts of disasters like the Eaton Fire and the underserved and vulnerable populations, emphasizing the urgent need for systematic change to prevent such tragedies in the future. Anthony?
Good evening. As the general counsel's office of the NAACP, we've been fighting for civil rights literally for more than 100 years. We are the oldest and largest civil rights organization in this country. Your rights are something that we're fighting for again now. And whereas when we filed Board, Brown versus Board of Education, we were fighting for the rights of Black folks generally, with regard to what's going on now, we're fighting for the rights of folks individually. Someone asked, how did you end up partnering with Singleton Schreiber? And that's very simple. We, throughout our work, work with the, some of the best lawyers literally in the country. And that's every day, day in, day out, for fighting for civil rights. With regard to this action, we were charged with by our president, find the best fire litigation firm that you can and partner with them. I will say this and I'll, I'm allowed to say this because I can brag about them rather than them doing themselves, but they have represented more fire victims than any other law firm in this country. And that's why we're working with them. Our goal is to make sure that each and every one of you that chooses to pursue litigation is made whole to the best of our ability. You can applaud, that's all right.
We'd like to introduce Latisha Johnson of Singleton Schreiber. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. My name is Latisha Johnson and I am a partner at Singleton Schreiber. I run our Mississippi office and am in charge of expanding the southeast region. I've been with Singleton Schreiber for about a year. And I remember when I first sat down with them and we talked about the values of the firm and, you know, what they stood for. And I remember thinking, um, okay, we'll see. I can honestly tell you, I am so proud to be a member of Singleton Schreiber, as proud as I am to be a member of the NAACP, because they do put clients first, because they do put their values first. And they understand that you can do well and do good at the same time. Our managing partner, Jill Singleton, who I think is overall just a good human being, has represented thousands of property owners in suits against utility companies. And so I know you're here to hear him, so, Jerry?
Thank you, Latisha. Thank you very much. It really is an honor to be here. Want to thank all of you for coming out. And the other thing that I want to do whenever we do these talks, when we get started, I just want to say that, can everybody hear me in the back? Perfect. I just want to say how sorry we are for your loss. If you're here, it means that either you or someone you love has suffered a loss and that is something that we take very seriously. As several people said, our goal here is to make sure that every one of our clients has the resources necessary to rebuild. There was a really unique community that was significantly damaged by this fire. And one of the things that I love about doing this kind of work, and we do a lot of different types of cases, we represent wrongful death, we represent traumatic brain injuries, just all kinds of things. But the thing that I really love about doing fire litigation is that when the clients come to us, oftentimes they're suffering, they're at one of the lowest points in their lives. But if we do our job correctly, then we are part of helping them overcome that and we can see the transformation. Our part in that is small. All we're doing is getting you the resources. All of you are doing the hard work, but just seeing that and seeing communities come together is inspiring. And that's one of the things that I really love about this type of work and that I really love about this opportunity. Because I think everyone heard President Lamar, he's from here, and he talked about how critical it is to rebuild this community. And what we're going to do is to make sure that all of you have the resources to do that. So what I'd like to do is talk about the case in general, let you know the newest information we have, and then also answer questions. And one thing that I really encourage people to do is to shout out your questions. If you're reluctant to shout it out, just raise your hand and we'll call on you. But the whole purpose of this is to give all of you the information that you need to make decisions. And we can't do that if it's just me talking. So anytime you have questions, please let us know if you're thinking it, odds are your neighbor or somebody else is thinking it, and we can get that information out. So starting at the beginning, what we do is represent individuals in suits against utility companies that start these fires. I'm sure you've all heard about the possibility that Edison, Southern California Edison is responsible, so let me talk a little bit about the issue of liability. Now I want to be very clear, there has been no official determination of liability. Obviously, there hasn't been a trial. All we have to go on is the evidence available. So what we do is we look at these cases and we look at a lot of different fires. For example, late last year, there were two significant fires in the Los Angeles and Ventura County areas that we looked at and we determined that they were not caused by utility fire, by utility company, so we didn't go forward on them. We are only interested in going forward in these cases if it appears that there is a viable defendant, because otherwise we can't deliver what you need and it would be pointless for us to go in and waste your time. So when we're looking at this, we're doing everything we can to determine whether or not the defendant is actually responsible. With Edison, I'm sure everyone has seen the videos online of the arcing. And what that shows is arcing coming from the lines and going down, looks like it hits something and then hitting the ground. Now, that's obviously very strong evidence, but in this day and age, it's certainly possible to create through AI all kinds of images that look real but aren't. So the first thing we want to do is inspect the actual scene and see whether or not the evidence is consistent with what we're seeing in the videos. Took a little while, but this past weekend, our experts were able to go to the scene and investigate and inspect it. Now, these experts are retired arson investigators and collectively, the two that we hire have investigated well over 1,000 fires. And this is all different kind of fires, utility, other types of human causes, whether it's arson, whether it's a campfire, fireworks, somebody throwing out a cigarette, you name it, we've seen it. And they've seen it and they've investigated it. And so when you're looking at this, you're trying to do two things. Number one, you want to rule out natural causes, and that we can do, there were no lightning events, there was nothing like that. And the second thing you're looking at is whether or not there's any other human cause. So one of the most common would be something like an individual starting a campfire. And unfortunately, in our community, there is a significant homeless and unhoused population and there are often encampments in certain areas. And one of the narratives that Edison has pushed, in fact, we received a letter from them this morning talking about a homeless encampment near the start of the fire, is that this is actually caused by a homeless encampment. I don't know if some folks remember, several years ago, there was a Skirball fire near the Getty Museum, that in fact was actually caused by a homeless encampment. So that's something that we take seriously and we want to look at it and we want to determine whether or not that is a plausible theory. Our investigators went and they determined that there was no evidence of any type of an encampment within several hundred yards. The one that Edison is talking about is at least 300 yards away and it actually appears that it could be a little bit farther. But there's no indication of any kind that any fire was started there and then burned over towards the tower. And if that would have occurred, if for example, because certainly fire travels, we know that, so it would be possible for there to be a fire that spread. Now, that would not be consistent with what we've seen because in the different footage that we've seen, there's an arcing event that comes from the line down to the ground and something that starts down the hill and burns up is going to be very different. So we had our doubts, but when they went and inspected, they found absolutely no evidence to suggest that number one, there was a fire, and number two, there was a fire that spread and moved 300 yards up the hill. So they ruled that out. They also ruled out other causes that are common, such as fireworks, things of that nature. The other thing that's very critical is that the arcing event that all of us have seen would have resulted in some specific damage to the tower. And when they inspected the tower, they found markings that were consistent with arcing, and that just means the fire coming down and hitting it on the tower. So you have, and I'm just summarizing the evidence for everyone, you have no natural occurring event like lightning, you have no indication of any human caused event like a campfire, like fireworks, like a cigarette, anything like that. You have video, and not just one, but multiple plus, we have different witnesses who saw it and are all saying the same thing. And that shows light coming, fire coming from the actual line down and appearing to hit the tower. Then the inspection shows markings on the tower that are consistent with that event. So when you put all that together, what our inspectors told me is, look, this was either Edison's lines or it's a cause we've never seen before. So that's where we are right now and we are pretty confident that Edison started it. Now, obviously, that's just our belief, Edison is denying it as they have every right to do, and the process will go forward. So let me talk a little bit about that. We have filed two suits thus far. I'm sure you've seen a number of other attorneys have filed suits. And all of those suits are going to be consolidated together for pre-trial purposes. The way that the process works is that while each of these suits is individual, hold it up higher, ah, good, sorry, I didn't want to be too loud. While all of these suits are individual, there is a, it's either coordination or consolidation depending upon a number of factors, in this case it'll be consolidation, but everything is consolidated in front of a single judge. And that judge will handle all of the pre-trial matters. Now, the good thing about this case is that because it is in Los Angeles, the fire occurred in Los Angeles and Southern California Edison is based in Los Angeles, it will be consolidated. That means that the process of bringing everything together in front of a single judge will be quicker, which will be very good for all of us because Edison is not going to pay until they're forced to. And that's one question we get, which is, why is it necessary to bring these actions so quickly? Why not wait? The answer is simple, it's twofold. Number one, you want to be able to make sure that there is no destruction of evidence, not suggesting that Edison would, but there is a TRO, temporary restraining order that is now in place that prevents that from happening. So now we don't have to worry about that. Number two, we want to get this process started as quickly as possible because in the cases we've handled, and we've handled a couple dozen of these large cases, including five different ones in LA County dealing with Edison, they only pay when they have to. It's not like once suits are filed, they say, okay, let's sit down and let's make these payments. What they are going to do is to drag this out as long as possible. And that's understandable, that's what defendants do and that's the way our system works. What our job is, is to push it along so that we can get these cases resolved for you more quickly. So what we do is we try and get a trial date as quickly as possible. Now, most of these cases do not go to trial, but the key thing about the trial date is it forces the defendant, in this case Edison, to make a decision. Do they want to go to trial or do they want to start fairly resolving these cases? And what's happened in every other case we've had with Edison, whether it's the Thomas Fire in 2017, the Woolsey Fire in 2018, Bobcat Fire in 2020, or the Fairview Fire in 2022, every single one of those, they initially denied responsibility, case was filed, you went through the discovery process where we were able to prove that they were responsible, we got a trial date, and then at that point, they decided they wanted to resolve these cases. And so that's the way the process works. Now, here, because there are going to be so many plaintiffs, I'm sure everyone's seen the number of structures destroyed, and the structures are a little bit, I'm not going to say off because they're certainly accurate, but when they count structures, they would count a home and a detached garage as being two structures, which certainly they are, but that's obviously one family. And so when you see the number, and I think the number now is close to 8,000 structures that are destroyed, that doesn't mean that 8,000 homes were destroyed, the actual number is going to be a little lower. That said, there are going to be in all likelihood, 5,000 to 6,000 single family residences that are destroyed, there are going to be multi-unit residences, apartment buildings, things like that, and then there are commercial structures. So this is going to be a very, very large case. I would anticipate 12, maybe 14,000 separate actions that are going to be brought. And so what we want to do is we want to move that process along. We want to get a trial date and we want to push it so that Edison has to either start trying these cases or get into a mediation process where we start resolving them. So let's talk a little bit about how that works, who can sue and what is recoverable. One of the questions that we get most often is who can sue? For example, is it only a person that owns a home? If you're a renter, is it only the person whose name's on the lease? One very common one is, well, I was renting a room in a friend's house, or I was living with parents or other relatives, I'm not on the lease, I'm not on the deed, do I have the right to bring a suit? And the answer is absolutely. If you suffered a loss as a result of this fire, then you can bring a suit. So if you were someone who was, for example, an adult child living at home, if you were someone who has a nuclear family and you were taking care of a parent or grandparent, absolutely, both that nuclear family and the parent or grandparent can bring a case as well. Bottom line is, if you suffered a loss, you can bring a claim. And it's not just if you suffered the actual destruction of your home. The soot and ash claims, and those are for people who had to evacuate and then their home was damaged by soot and ash, are also very significant. Now, it's not a contest, so I'm certainly not saying that those are as significant as home losses, but there are some things to really keep in mind when you're talking about soot and ash claims. Number one, this is not campfire smoke. This is not, you know, trees burning, this is not wood that you would buy and put in your fireplace. These are toxic, heavy metals that are in this smoke. And the reason for that is, there are numerous reasons. One is that anytime you have older buildings, they have asbestos. When that burns, the asbestos gets up into the air and we all know how damaging asbestos is. There are cars that burn, so you have aluminum. There are lithium batteries that burn. There are all different kinds of things that burn. You have lead, you have arsenic, you name it, it's in this. And the more we learn about this smoke, the more toxic we realize that it is. So again, I'm not saying that if you have smoke damage to your home, you can't go back, that's not the case at all. However, it's important to realize that this can be significant and it can be particularly significant for people who have respiratory issues, autoimmune issues, or anything like that. One of the most common things that we face are elderly folks who have COPD or other types of issues. And I can't tell you the number of people I've represented who prior to the fire had COPD, but it was largely manageable. They might be, you know, on a tank for part of the day. After the fire, because of the smoke exposure that they had, they went to having to use oxygen full time. to use oxygen full time. That is a very common thing. People with asthma, particularly children, older people, it can be very significant. So, the advice that I would give to everyone is, if you have any type of smoke damage in your home, you want to make sure that the home is evaluated, and if you were particularly close to the fire, or if you're someone, or your family member is someone who has respiratory issues, who has autoimmune, who has asthma, who has anything like that, it's important to have an industrial hygienist come in and check and make sure that it's safe. This is something that is very common, we can certainly refer you to people, but you want to make sure that you have that test done, to make sure that you and your family are safe. So, that's, that's kind of an answer as to who can sue. Again, the answer is, anyone who was affected by the fire. Yes, ma'am?
Should we join more than one lawsuit? You're representative of a firm waiting in, you want to join, or you want to be here anymore? Is there a question about that?
Okay, that's a great question. The question was, should we join more than one lawsuit? And the answer is no, ab- absolutely not. You only want to join one suit, because what will happen if you join two suits, is that, let's say you hired us and you hired somebody else, both of us would file for you, the defense would get notice of that, and they would notify us that you each have the same client, and only one of you can represent her. So, when that happens, we contact the other attorney, and then both of us would contact the client, and the client would make a selection as to who they wanted to represent them. So, it's a great question, and people do that, and, and I can understand why, but it's, it's important to only hire one attorney. Looks like we have a question here. Oh, question is, how many cases have we litigated against utility companies and fire cases? A couple dozen, I don't have the exact amount, they are on our website, we go through and, and do every one. Quick overview, the first one we did was in 2007, in San Diego, there were three major fires, and we've been doing them all over California, we're very involved in Maui, Oregon, Washington, Texas, New Mexico, Colorado, we do this all over the country, that's why we have a large firm, we have 80 lawyers, we have over 400 people, and the reason for that is, it's necessary to be able to handle all these cases, to work them up. Yes, ma'am, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just, you told me that, you have the option to join a court action lawsuit, or you could just hire an attorney to individually represent just a few?
Okay. Ab- absolutely, so, really good question. The question was, individual representation versus more of a class action model, is that what you were talking about? Okay, so that's a great question, and that's an important thing to look at. In California, class actions are not often used for fires. Some firms tried to use them about 15 years ago, we were opposed to them, and a lot of us were successful in defeating them. Let me give everyone the reasons why I think individual cases are more, are better for this type of litigation than class actions. So, class actions are very important, and they're very effective for the types of cases that they were intended to address. With a class action, you need to have three things. You need to have similarity of damages, meaning that the damages for every one of the class members are substantially similar, don't have to be identical, but have to be very similar. You have to have a, a large number of claims, and then the damages have to be small enough that it would not be economically feasible to hire an attorney to address them. So, the example I give is the Volkswagen emissions cases. I don't know if everybody remembers, but about five, six years ago, Volkswagen got caught falsifying the emissions on certain of their vehicles. And because of that, cars that people thought were worth X, were actually worth X minus up to about $10,000, depending upon a number of factors, the year, the mileage, that kind of thing. But, that's the kind of action that is readily ascertainable in terms of a class action, because what you do is, you look at the number of cars sold, and there would have been, say, a million Jettas sold. You look at that and you say, okay, if you had a Jetta from 2017 that had 20,000 miles on it, the Blue Book says $20,000, but it's actually now worth 16, because it's not as efficient as they represented it. So, you can do the math, you can multiply it, and you can come up with what the appropriate numbers are, and that's exactly what they did, and so they settled those on behalf of several million people for about $2 billion, and everybody got a, a small amount. And that made perfect sense. That is a good way to handle those kinds of cases. However, it doesn't work in fires, because the damages are not substantially similar. You could have soot and ash, you could have renters, go ahead, ma'am.
Wait, you have, 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 you have?
Yes, so the question was, when you have someone who has tragically died in the fire, would you file a claim on behalf of the estate? The answer is yes, you file a claim on behalf of the estate, and you can also bring separate claims for all of the heirs. And different heirs have different rights, depending upon how closely related they were to the individual. So, yes, sir?
Please, your fee structure, all understanding, if these cases are in charge, it's, 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 it's,[1103.23]
Forty percent. And it's a contingency, meaning that there's no money up front and the attorney will advance all costs and they will be paid at the end based upon a percentage. The percentage that we charge is twenty-five percent. I haven't seen anybody in this fire charging forty. I have seen it in some others. I know there are some folks that are still at a third and I'm sure there are people that are below. I don't personally know anybody who is. Most of the people I know are charging twenty-five. And I think for this fire, twenty-five is reasonable and is where it should be. Initially, we were, our standard is a third, so that's where we were. But when we looked at it, we felt twenty-five made more sense, so we dropped it down to twenty-five. So that's where it is. Let me get back to you in one second. I want to answer the second part of the question. So the second part of the question is, what about costs? So, costs are what it costs to work up the entire case, the liability, and then for each individual, there are going to be individual costs. So all of our clients will have two different kinds of costs. One is joint costs and one are individual costs. Now, the joint costs are going to be very, very low for a couple of reasons. One is that, in most cases, we have a large number of clients, usually between one and three thousand, depending upon the size of the case, and we share all joint costs among our clients on a pro-rata basis. And because of that, it's typically less than one-half of one percent. And these joint costs are things like depositions, liability experts, things like that, investigators, things that you need. But it's very, very low. It's typically about one-half of one percent. In this case, we have put together a group of all of the other individual plaintiff's attorneys. We had our first call earlier this week and we're having a recurring call Monday afternoons. And one of the things that we're going to do is have a joint group of liability experts. We always hire our own experts just to make sure that we have them. But what we've said to a number of other firms is, look, rather than have you guys either not have experts or just hire your own individual, you're welcome to come along and join us, use ours, and we can share the costs. So that will further bring down the costs for each of our clients. So I would anticipate that it will be significantly less than that one-half of one percent. But that's only part. One second, let me just finish this one. This gentleman had a question and then I will get to you. The other are the individual costs, and those are what is required to work up your damages. If you're a renter, you probably are not going to have much in the way of individual damage costs. You might have had some unusual item that we would have to hire somebody to appraise, so that could be one thing. Or, in rare circumstances, you could have had either physical injury or extreme psychological distress such that you needed us to hire a psychologist or psychiatrist to render an opinion. That's very rare, doesn't usually happen, but it could. So usually renters don't have much, if anything, by way of those individual costs. A homeowner is going to have a number of these costs. One is going to be the contractor, because we have to hire a contractor to give us an estimate as to what it would cost to rebuild what you had. You're probably going to have a landscape, either a landscaper or an arborist, depending upon where your home was. Most people in the immediate Altadena area are going to have landscapers, but there are some, as you get farther out, that had larger trees that may need arborists. So that's a different cost. Some people, particularly the ones that are near the hillside, may need erosion experts. Erosion, it's going to be less of an issue here, but it's often a huge problem in these fires. So what we do is we hire those experts, and we do get a discount because we give them so much business. But, those are costs that we advance and then we recover out of the end. They're usually very low, the costs, typically somewhere in the five thousand to ten thousand range for all of the experts. So, if the fee is twenty-five percent, the costs are usually less than two percent. I can't guarantee that because everyone is different, but that's what you're looking at. So, you're probably looking at a, you know, a real, when everything is done, of about twenty-seven percent. That's my best estimate. Yes, sir, you had a question and then let's go into the back. Okay, so the question was, if an insurance company denies your claim or doesn't pay you in full, is that something we handle? So, fortunately enough, we have an insurance expert here who's going to speak after me, who can talk about it. We do, as part of our firm, a limited amount of those cases, but we felt that, in this case, the best way forward would be to hire an expert, not hire, but to refer the cases to an insurance expert. So Greg is going to talk, once I'm done, about that, and he can let everybody know what services are available for people who believe that their insurance company did not treat them fairly. One thing I do want to address, and I misspoke at the last town hall, and Mr. Dickens fortunately let me know what the actual cost was, but I had quoted for public adjusters between ten and twenty percent, just because that's what I'd seen in other fires. But he let me know that, in this case, there are public adjusters who are charging less, some of whom are charging five percent, that sort of thing. So he and I are going to speak afterwards, and one of the things that we're going to put on our resource page is a reference to public adjusters who are charging less in case people are interested. And I just want to, you know, say, we're not suggesting that anyone hire any of the people on our resource page. We're not saying you have to, anything like that. All we're saying is, one of the things we want to do is give you as much information as possible, so when we come across a service that our clients may be interested in, if we're able to vet that person and we think they'd be good, then we put them on there. But again, we're not saying by any means that you have to hire anybody on there. Yes, in the back? And the question was about insurance companies and subrogation. So, that's a perfect segue into talking about how that works and how it will work in this particular case. So, yes, ma'am? So before we do subrogation, let me just answer this quick one. The question was, if this couple were to file, can someone in their home file a separate suit? And the answer is absolutely. It would just be limited to their losses, not yours. Oh, absolutely. They can hire a different firm, was that the question? Yes, yes, absolutely. So, let's say, for example, that the two of you own your home and you want to hire us. And so you hire us, we represent you, and we go through and document all of your damages. We bring a suit on your behalf. Let's say you have an adult child and that person has a relationship with another attorney or finds another attorney that they want to go with. They have the absolute right to do that, but it would only apply to their damages. So their emotional distress and their personal property is how it would work. So answering the question, and again, this is a key one, it's how insurance works in terms of subrogation, and the other key part is what the interplay is in these cases between insurance and the claim that you're going to make. Because while a lot of people have had their insurance canceled, most people do have insurance. It's going to be probably around eighty percent. So what we are doing in these claims is we are suing for the uninsured portion. And so, the way that we determine that is this. If you're a homeowner, you're in all likelihood going to have, it's different if you have Fair Plan, but if you have a standard, you're going to have coverage A, which would cover your structure, coverage B, which would cover your contents, and then coverage C, which would cover outbuildings, landscaping, things like that. You'll also have loss of use, also called ALE, alternate living expenses, depends on the type of policy. So, what we do is we have experts who will come in and determine what your total loss is. So, with the structure, you're probably going to be underinsured to a certain extent. Usually, it's between one and three hundred thousand for an average home. So, we take that amount, and again, let's just say it's six hundred thousand for insurance, and the actual cost is going to be nine hundred thousand. We take that amount, which is three hundred thousand, and we are suing for that. Now let's go to your personal property. You're probably going to have a shortfall of anywhere between fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand, depending upon a number of factors. And a lot of people will look at the number, because it'll usually be between three and five hundred thousand, and say, hey, that's going to be plenty for my personal property. And it's a lot of money. But, one of the things that I've learned, doing this as many times as I have, is we accumulate a lot of stuff. And so when you make those lists up, it turns out that, I would say, seventy-five percent of my clients have a gap between what their personal property pays them and what their actual loss is. So that could be another hundred thousand, so we'd put that in there. Now you've got the three and you've got the one. Let's say with your landscaping, your limit's fifty thousand, and it's going to cost you seventy-five thousand to re-landscape, put in a new tree, put in new sprinklers, all of that kind of stuff. So you've got a twenty-five thousand dollar gap. So you look at that, and that is around four hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's what we are going to be suing for. We're suing for the difference between what your insurance company paid or what the policy limits are, if it looks like you're going to get policy limits, and what you're actually going to need to be made whole. And one of the good things about this type of suit is that, because there's a cause of action called inverse condemnation, which is very unusual, it has a fee-shifting provision. Under, in most cases, they go under what's called the American rule. And the American rule just means that everybody pays their own attorney fees. But, with the fee-shifting provision under inverse condemnation, for all your real and personal property damages, the defendant has to contribute a reasonable amount of attorney fees. So what we do is, we'd look at that four hundred and twenty-five thousand, we'd figure out what the attorney fees are on that, and we'd put that on top of it. In addition, they have to pay your reasonable cost of suit and prejudgment interest. Now, it's a low amount, it's usually between one and two percent. It's not what you would actually get, but it is something. We put all that together, and those are the economic damages that we're suing for. But that's only half of it, because the other half are the non-economic damages, and those are very significant. That's everything that you're going through. That is, if you were somebody that had to flee the fire, that emotional distress you experienced. That is losing your home, losing the place that, if it's a family home, a place you used to go to when you were a child. That is losing the cherished possessions, the things that you can never get back, the pictures of deceased relatives. You know, an example I give, hang on just one second, let me finish this and then I'll come over. One example I give is, in my office, I have a picture of my grandmother, and we were very close. I was her first grandson and she lived near me, and she lived to be ninety-nine, so we spent a lot of time together. And if I were to lose my office, I mean, that's really the only thing that I would really want out of it. Everything else can be replaced, except for that picture. And that's what we mean by a cherished possession, something that does not have any fair market value or any significant fair market value, but it means a lot to you. Something that your children made you when they were in kindergarten, those kinds of things, those are cherished possessions. And that all comes under that emotional distress. So all of that is a huge loss, and we're going to sue for that non-economic in addition to the economic. We put all that together, we submit a demand packet, which is supported by, it's basically a spreadsheet, but then it is supported by all of the different reports, a narrative of what you went through, all of those things, that's the workup element, and then we make that demand. Then we'll go to a mediation, they'll come in and they'll say, you're way too high, it should be a fraction of that. We fight back and forth, we get to a number, and then you make the individual decision, do I want to settle for that or do I not? But, to your question, and I'm sorry for the long lead-up, but I just wanted to make sure we talked about that. To your question, the insurance company can't come back and try and get anything because we've already taken out what they paid you. And the reason we do that, because a lot of people say, well, wait a minute, I paid for my insurance, why is Edison getting the benefit of it? The answer is they're not. Your insurance company, whether you have Farmers or State Farm or Allstate or USAA, GEICO, any of those, is going to file their own suit, a subrogation action, and they're going to try and recover what they paid out. In this fire, that will probably be several billion dollars, and so they're going to be filing that suit and they're going to be trying to recover that, but the good news is, to go to your question, they cannot now come back after that and try and get any of your money. Yeah. So let me go over here, over here, and then let's go over here. Yes, ma'am? Okay, so the question was, the day before the fire, you just completed a solar system. So you're obviously entitled to recover for all the value of that solar system. No question at all. One of the things that people ask is, well, you know, how do I prove it? Because a lot of times, with the solar system, it should be okay, but for a lot of times, people say, well, I had this personal property, but if I did have any receipts, everything was burned. So, the way that you do that is, it can be your testimony, it can be the testimony of friends, relatives, but the other thing is, I'm not a big fan of social media, but one thing that has helped my practice immensely is that a lot of people take a lot of pictures, and in the background is a lot of stuff. So if you have, if you're somebody who uses social media, or if you're like me and you have kids that are always on social media, you can look at those pictures and you can see a lot of things in the background, and it'll show what the inside of your home looked like. So that can be very helpful. Yes, ma'am, I think right here had a question, and then let's come over here. We'll come over there, let's do this right here. Okay, so, the question was, at the beginning, we talked about what our investigators saw when they went out and did the inspection of Edison's equipment. So the question was, who ultimately makes the determination of whether or not Edison is at fault? And the answer is, there are going to be two separate determinations that are made. The first is going to be by either the Los Angeles County Fire or by Cal Fire, and they will determine the cause as they believe it, and they'll write a report of investigation. Now, while that is very helpful, and we always look at those, that's not binding in court. That's just, it's like a police report. So, and if you've ever seen a police report, oftentimes they're accurate, but sometimes they're not. And with the same thing here, in all the fires I've investigated, I'd say Cal Fire's gotten it wrong twice. So, you know, they're over ninety percent, but it's not always right. And Edison certainly doesn't have to accept their finding as gospel. They can say, nope, we disagree with it. So the ultimate decision, in our case, will be made by a jury. If we do go to trial and if Edison doesn't want to settle, then there will be two decisions that will be made. One will be by a jury as to whether or not they believe Edison was negligent, and another will be by the Superior Court Judge who's assigned to the case. That judge will decide whether or not they believe Edison is liable in inverse condemnation, because there's a different standard and that determination is made by the Superior Court Judge. The good news, though, is that the judge is not making the determination on damages. Inverse condemnation is a two-pronged case. One is the determination of fault, which is made by a judge, then the damages are made by a jury. So, either way, we'll get a jury and the jury will determine what your losses are. I think, right here and then right there. Yes? Okay. Okay. So two good questions, and I want to make sure I got the first part correct. The question was, when do we anticipate a settlement? Yeah. And then the second part is, why should you choose us? Okay, so, the first, the answer to the first question is, there's no way of knowing for sure. I can tell you what typically happens, and then we can talk about how we think it's going to happen here. So usually, you're looking at eighteen to twenty-four months before settlements begin. And the reason for that is that, when you file a lawsuit, the defendant is trying to delay it out. And so, the determination, the most important decision that the judge can make is when he or she sets that trial date. Because the trial date really provides a point that a decision has to be made. And so that's why we push so hard to get those trial dates early. I think here, given the fact that this is a case that has an incredible amount of media attention, and it's very important to a lot of people, that the judge is going to move more quickly, I am optimistic that there will be an earlier trial date, and so I think we may get settlements in this case a little bit earlier. This is optimistic, but I'm trying to push for twelve to eighteen months. It would be great if it was before that, but I mean, realistically, the quickest we've ever gotten a settlement was ten and a half months. That was in a smaller fire, it was dealing with PG&E, and PG&E at the time had a severe image problem, and so they were thinking, if we can start settling these cases early and show that we're a good corporate citizen, it will help us. Plus, it was a much smaller fire, it was at a billion total, whereas this is going to be much higher, probably five to seven billion, and possibly even higher, depending upon a number of factors. So, that's my answer, is realistically, the average is about eighteen to twenty-four months, we're going to push to make it more, make it quicker. So the second question you had, and then we'll come down here, the second question you had was why you should use us. And so, I think there's a couple of things that I would say in terms of choosing an attorney. The first thing you want to do is choose the right attorney for your problem. You want to make sure, in this case, that you have someone who has a lot of experience, not just in fires, but in utility fires. And so, you know, for example, if I were to try to handle a divorce case, I wouldn't know what to do. I've never done that. I mean, I'm sure I could learn, but I don't have any experience with it. Same thing here. You don't want to hire an attorney who doesn't have experience handling these types of cases to represent you. Now that said, there are a number of attorneys who are very good at this, and I'm certainly not saying we're the only one. Obviously, we think we're very good, but there are other ones. So I think at that point, what you want to do is you want to interview different attorneys, you want to listen to what they say, and you want to find someone that you are comfortable with. One thing that I think is very important is don't be in a hurry. I'm certainly not suggesting that everyone wait until the end of the statute of limitations, which is two years for personal injury and emotional distress, and three years for property damage. I wouldn't recommend waiting that long, but don't feel like you have to make a decision today, tomorrow, or next week. Take your time, really select, and make sure that you are comfortable with the attorney. You know, do they have the capability of handling these cases? Do they answer your questions? Are they responsive? Those are the things that you're looking for, because there are certainly, you know, four or five firms that do this a lot and are very good, but you want to make sure that you get somebody who you feel comfortable with and you feel like will do a good job representing your individual interests. Just real quick, we had a question here. Oh, okay. So, we have a, we'll come to that in just one second, there's a car blocked in, so we're going to do a public service announcement, please?
Public service announcement. We have a blue Honda Accord, seven WV M oh three five. Again, a blue Honda Accord to my left, on this side is blocking a car in that needs to get out. California license plates, seven WV M zero three five. If you could please go out and move your car so someone can get out, thank you.
All right. I'm proud to say that is not my car, so I'm not the person at fault. Let's go across here and then we'll come back to this side, because we had some folks that had their hands up. I'm just going to come around here and then I'll come right back. Yes, ma'am, go ahead and then we'll come over here. Yes. Yes, okay, great question. So the question was, insurance, how does the California Fair Plan differ? The answer is, is that because it is the insurer of last resort, it is not a standard policy, it's going to be more expensive, and the coverage is going to be more limited. So, there are versions of the California Fair Plan where people do not have personal contents coverage. There are versions where people do not have coverage for alternate living expenses. It really depends on your current policy, but if you got an average policy from State Farm, any of the major insurers, I can tell you what to expect. With Fair Plan, it's very individual, and unfortunately, you end up paying more for it, and that's just because of the nature of it. All different kinds of insurance and no insurance. We always have a significant number of folks who unfortunately are uninsured, and that's for Insurance companies have been very aggressive about canceling and non-renewing policies. Let's go right here and then we'll come over there. I'm sorry, let me do this right here and then I'll come to you. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am? So the question is, if you have an antique, and how that is handled different from a regular piece of property? So the standard, when you're dealing with personal property, and this could be an antique, this could be a sofa, a TV, a car, any type of personal property, the standard is fair market value. So as a result, if you have an antique, you could have something that is worth much more than what you paid for it. What you are entitled to recover is the fair market value for that antique. So, if you bought it and it was, you know, two thousand dollars, but now it's worth ten, you are entitled to recover ten thousand for that. Yes, ma'am? Oh, an heirloom? Okay, so that's a really good question. So for heirlooms, there's two components to that. One is, you're entitled to recover the fair market value, but at the same time, that is a type of cherished possession. For example, if you had a ring that was passed down in your family, that obviously has a fair market value. So, it wouldn't be like the picture I have of my grandma, where the only person who's interested in that is me and my sisters, but just, you know, mainly us, doesn't have a fair market value, whereas a ring or something like that, an antique, is going to, it's an heirloom. So you take the fair market value, and then on top of that, you make a non-economic damage claim, because it has sentimental value that is over and above what a typical piece of furniture would. All right. Let's come over here. Stripe shirt and then right behind. Go ahead. Absolutely, that's a great question. So, one of the things about this fire that was so tragic, and I'm sure everyone's read the articles, I know it was in the New York Times, LA Times, and I think there's also been some news coverage on it, but as most folks know, there was a problem with notifying people who were west of Lake. And I actually drove up Lake today and looked at both sides, and you can certainly see the damage. So the issue is whether or not there's an additional source of liability. So let me answer it this way. The first liability, and the entity that is liable no matter what, is Edison. Edison started the fire, and so whether or Edison started the fire, and so whether or not there was an issue in terms of notifying people, Edison is still one hundred percent responsible. But that doesn't address the very real concern about whether or not there were serious mistakes made. And if there were mistakes made, whether this was a, a negligence issue of, for example, the, uh, folks who made the determination, looking at it, saying the fire's never gonna get west of Lake, so we're not gonna send out preliminary notices, or if there was something more nefarious going on. And, uh, this is actually something that, um, I was, uh, looking at and thinking about earlier today because it would be nice if we lived in a country where we didn't have to worry about that. But, uh, that is not the case. And, and certainly historically, there have been, um, incredible amounts of systemic racism where it's possible to look at this and say, I wonder if this was deliberate. My message to people would be this. This is absolutely something where we need to have a very thorough investigation. I know President Johnson has called for one, and this is something where we have to look at it and we have to find out what happened. Um, for what it's worth, I personally don't think it makes sense to jump to those conclusions until we have more evidence. So I think what we have to do is do an investigation and look at it and see why these determinations were made. One thing I can say, um, and, and this is having handled, you know, a lot of these fires, this is, uh, unfortunately, not the first time where there were breakdowns in the warning system, and those breakdowns had fatal consequences. Uh, in the Tubbs Fire in Santa Rosa, which is, uh, a predominantly white, uh, very upper-middle-class, uh, community, there was a complete failure. I mean, it was catastrophic, and they did not let people know. As a result, over twenty people died. And, um, you know, there's, there's no doubt in my mind, that was, that was negligence. That wasn't a situation where they wanted those people to die or, or any other nefarious thing. They just made a mistake. Um, in Maui, um, there was a severe failure to notify people. And you had people, um, you know, white. Uh, every ethnicity you can imagine died, uh, in the Lahaina Fire. There were a hundred and two people that were killed. And frankly, I, I think there were more, but because of the nature of the, the damages, there are still people that are unaccounted for, that I don't think we'll ever find, uh, because of just how horrific that was. So while it is a serious issue, while we need to look at it, and while we certainly live, unfortunately, in a place that has systemic racism, um, I, I, we, we can't jump to that conclusion now. We need to look at it, and it needs to be something that we figure out, uh, as we move forward. So I, I hope that answered the question. Absolutely. Let's go here and then we'll come back around. I know there's a bunch of folks on this side that have questions. You're next, I promise. Go ahead. Great question. So question was, do we provide support for people that are undocumented? Absolutely. You are entitled to bring a claim regardless of your immigration status. The only difference is, you can't make a claim for lost wages in the United States if you do not have the right to work here because you don't have any reasonable expectation of future employment. So you could certainly make a claim for past lost wages. You could make a claim for emotional distress. If you owned your house, you could make a claim for that. If you were a renter, you can make a claim for that. You just are prevented from making a claim for future lost wages. We also have Spanish speakers, um, so we can help anyone. And in these fires, particularly in some of the more rural areas, we've, uh, represented a lot of folks who were undocumented migrant workers, and that's something we have a lot of experience with. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your patience. Sorry. Mm-hmm. Okay, so, uh, several questions there. Let me, let me answer them one by one. So the first question is, uh, there's an issue on your policy as to how much you're entitled to. So let me suggest this. One of the things that we do, one of the resources we provide, is we have a retired insurance adjuster. Uh, introduced him at the last, uh, town hall. His name is Joel Alba. This is absolutely free. It does not cost you anything. You can call Joel. You can send him your policy. He'll look at it and he'll say, okay, under the terms of your policy, they owe you X. And he can answer that question. He can answer any other questions you have about your policy. And this is something I encourage people to do. Um, we do this for a reason. We make Joel available. And, um, you know, he really does a good job. He, he spent over three decades in the industry before he retired. We've been using him since the 2017 fires, and he's helped a lot of our clients. And so I, I think he can help you with that. So I encourage, if you need the information, let me know and I'll do it. Hang on just one sec. Let me finish this. Okay, perfect. Yeah, and so that's on our website. You can also call, um, you can email us, and you can just let us know. I'd like to get Joel's information. We will pass it along. Uh, he's very accessible, and you can reach out to him. So the next question was, um, it sounded like you were saying, they're giving, go ahead. No, really good question. So, uh, the question was, can you incorporate into the building, um, elements of, uh, fire prevention? And, and the answer is absolutely. Um, particularly if you have an older home, you're gonna have to make a significant number of upgrades that are designed to prevent, uh, fires. Uh, all kinds of code upgrades. And it's important to remember that while Edison only has to replace what you had, that means they have to replace the house you had and bring it up to current code. Because you can't rebuild a nineteen fifty's house now. Yet you can rebuild a fifty's house, but you're gonna have to make a ton of improvements in order to satisfy current fire codes, all of those kinds of things. They absolutely have to pay for those. So that, that is, is something to keep in mind. One thing I wanted to do, and this is something that I've, I've heard a lot of, and it goes with what President Lamar was saying, is, uh, this is a question we get a lot. We're asked oftentimes, should I sell my property and take the insurance payout? Because insurance will give you a certain amount if you wanna payout now. Um, and I, before I say this, I have to say this disclaimer. Um, my job as an attorney is to tell you what the law is. It's not to make a decision for you. So I'm telling you what the law is. I'm giving you the information. And then you control your life, your case, you make the decision. So here's what I would say. When it comes to fire damage, it is ninety-nine times out of a hundred, if not nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine times out of a thousand, much more advantageous to retain your property than it is to sell it. And there are a couple of reasons for that. One is, if you have a standard insurance policy, then when you're looking at what the cost to rebuild is, there will be an overage. So if you had, for example, six hundred thousand dollars to rebuild your structure, there should be a twenty-five to fifty percent overage on there. So that means if you're actually building, you can get seven hundred and fifty to nine hundred thousand instead of that six hundred thousand that you would get if you cashed out. So just as it applies to insurance, that's something to keep in mind. However, there is a more important reason when it comes to how damages are calculated in a lawsuit. There are two different ways of determining real property damages. One is diminution in fair market value. And that means value the day before versus value the day after. Now, for all of these properties, no matter how destroyed the property is, it will have some value the day after because we live in Southern California. And dirt's expensive. So even if your home was completely destroyed, you could get, you know, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, or, or more for your lot. So if your home was worth a million dollars the day before the fire, and the fire destroys it, it's gonna be worth, you know, a hundred, two hundred thousand afterward. So that means that you're limited to eighty to ninety percent of the pre-fire value in terms of your real property under the diminution in fair market value. However, California, over the last forty years, has developed a separate method of looking at how you value these cases, and it's called the cost of repair. The general rule is, the value is the lesser of diminution in fair market value or cost of repair unless, and this is the exception that in these cases swallows the rule, you have a personal reason for wanting to rebuild. And the reason can be as simple as it was in the case that, uh, started this. I like the way the land looked before, and I wanna repair it. That's a personal reason. I wanna rebuild my house is a personal reason. If you have a personal reason, you can not only recover the cost of repair if it's more expensive than the DIV, you can recover the cost of repair if it's more expensive than the pre-fire value. The seminal case on this is a case called Kelly versus CBNI Constructors. Came out of, uh, Los Angeles, a fire in Antelope Valley, um, a number of years ago. The case came out in two thousand nine. And it allowed the plaintiff to recover a hundred and sixty-seven percent of the pre-fire value of their property. But that's not a cap. That's just the highest case that has been recorded yet. In these settlements, we routinely get two, three, four hundred percent of the pre-fire value. So again, if you use that million dollars, if you're limited to diminution in fair market value and you're getting eighty percent, that's eight hundred thousand. If you're getting two hundred percent, that's two million. There's a huge difference there. So again, I can't tell you what you should do. Everyone has to make that decision. And obviously, you have to be honest. If you absolutely intend to sell and you have no intention of rebuilding, then that's what it is. However, one other piece of advice I give everyone is that you should never make a major life decision after a traumatic event. Just not a good idea. You should wait at least six months. And I can't tell you the number of people that I've represented who immediately after the fire said, you know, I'm done. I'm going to, you know, move to, uh, Texas to be with my kids, or, or whatever it was. And after they started to, after they got into a rental home and after they started to, to get their lives back together, they said, you know, I'd, I'd kinda like to rebuild my home. And so the advice I give everybody is just wait six months. If in six months, you still wanna sell, that's fine. But there is a huge financial reason for you not to sell. And again, any psychologist will tell you, it's never a good idea to make a major life decision immediately after a traumatic event. So, uh, we had another question. Yes, ma'am. And then we'll come back to this gentleman here. Yes, ma'am. Sure. Great question. So the question was, if you sign up with us, how long does it take for you to get contacted? So the way we work is we have teams of people. And everybody has a different job. My job is to supervise everything with a focus on the litigation. So I'll be in court, um, and a gentleman named Paul Storita, one of our partners, and I will handle most of the litigation along with a couple of associates. The damages portion is going to be worked up by our damages teams. And we have two partners that head that up. One is Alicia Zimmerman, one is Gary Locurdo. Alicia is in charge of supervising all of the damages teams. Gary is in charge of the mediation packets and preparing everything for mediation. And then Gary and I handle the mediations. So the way that it works is, once you sign up, we will contact you within a couple of days, establish contact, and set up a time to have a more in-depth interview. At that interview, we're gonna wanna know things like, were you a homeowner or a renter? If you were a homeowner, did you have a significant number of trees? Did you have erosion damages? And the purpose of these questions is to find out what experts we need to hire and get out to your property. We have a woman whose job it is to coordinate experts in all the fires. That's all she does. So she knows all the experts. If you were to say, I need a contractor, um, I'm concerned because I'm on a hillside, we would send out a contractor and, uh, an erosion specialist, uh, an engineer, to determine whether or not you have that. We'll also wanna do an interview with you to talk about what your personal experience was because that goes to your non-economic damages. And what we're looking for there are two things. Number one, your proximity to the fire when it was happening. So were you someone who received notice and had to flee in the middle of the night? Were you someone that was able to get out earlier? Those kinds of things. And then number two, what was your experience after the fire? Um, were you able to get into a rental unit immediately? Did you have to bounce around? Um, because all of that matters. What you went through individually is gonna determine what your individual case is worth. There are certain generalities, but everybody's case is different. And somebody who, um, and, and I'm not denigrating this, I'm, I'm happy for them. But you know, I have clients who their insurance will put them up at the Ritz. And while they're very sad about losing their home, they're, they're not suffering anything immediate. I have other clients who are uninsured and are sleeping in their cars. And, um, when you compare those two, there are gonna be common elements. Certainly, losing everything is very traumatic. But the person who's sleeping in their car is going to have much more trauma than someone who's put up at the Ritz. So you're looking for those types of facts so that we can do an individualized determination and then present that to the defense as part of your mediation packet. Um, let's come over here and then we'll come back around. Uh, this gentleman, and then this gentleman, and then, uh, the lady right here. Yes, sir. Sure thing. So let me, let me clarify. We have current suits for prior fires, but I think you were asking about these fires. Is that right? Got it, got it. Okay. Um, so, um, we, we do have suits going for prior fires like Fairview and those kind. But in terms of the other recent LA fires, um, Palisades, we know for a fact, was not Edison. Um, we believe it was caused by a reignition of a fire that happened on New Year's Day. That has not been confirmed yet. But if it was a utility, it would be the DWP, not Edison, because Edison did not have lines anywhere near the area of origin. So not Palisades. The Hearst Fire, which is up in Santa Clarita, um, was caused by Edison. It's gonna be very small, um, not gonna be particularly significant. It obviously is significant to the clients, and we represent people, but not to Edison in terms of their overall, um, uh, damages and, and anything like that. Um, the only other fire right now that we're looking at as potentially caused by utility is the Hughes Fire, which is still going. It's not clear. We know a general area where it started. But, um, it's not clear if that was DWP or Edison. Both have lines in the area. Um, I actually did a fire, um, out there, the Powerhouse Fire in two thousand thirteen. And DWP has plants, but Edison has transmission lines. And so it's not really clear if it was power caused, who caused it. But either way, as of right now, that's not a huge fire, so it wouldn't cause concern in terms of bankruptcy. In terms of bankruptcy, uh, there is almost no chance of Edison declaring bankruptcy uh, because of the reforms that were put into place after PG&E declared bankruptcy. As, as a lot of folks know, um, in two thousand nineteen, after causing twenty-four fires in a four-year period, PG&E declared bankruptcy. And so we were very involved. We represented six thousand folks. There were seventy thousand total claimants in those fires. We represented about six thousand through the bankruptcy process. And that was, um, it was a frustrating process because when you do that, there's not enough money available. You don't look at what the damages are. You look at what the defendant can pay with its assets. So while we were able to get, the deal was initially for thirteen point five billion, it ended up being fourteen billion. That went into a bankruptcy trust and was overseen. and ended up being fourteen billion, that went into a bankruptcy trust and was overseen by a trustee. It still wasn't enough and people were only compensated seventy cents on the dollar. We're still fighting in, um, in the legislature to try to get that fixed, but, um, we can't do anything legally speaking. However, the, the positive about that was after P G and E declared bankruptcy, there was a huge fight in the legislature where the investor-owned utilities, P G and E, Edison and Sempra, spent ten million dollars in six months lobbying the legislators, trying to get them to find, uh, or to pass a law making them immune from certain damages. Uh, we fought that, as did a number of other attorneys, and the ultimate compromise was a bill called A B, Assembly Bill Ten Fifty Four. A B Ten Fifty Four set up the California Wildfire Fund and you may have heard reference to that. And there's a lot of misunderstanding about how the fund operates. The fund is not a general insurance fund for any fire. It only helps investor-owned utilities. And the reason for that is that the fund was created, uh, and funded from two different sources. One was a cash deposit from the three investor-owned utilities, P G and E, uh, Sempra, which is San Diego Gas and Electric and Edison. They put in ten and a half billion dollars based on their market share. So Edison put in three point nine, P G and E put in a little over five and Sempra put in one point five. Then there's a three-dollar monthly surcharge on all of our bills that was set to expire on January one, two thousand twenty-one, but was continued for another fifteen years. That raises over a hundred million a month. That money all goes into the California Wildfire Fund, so now it has almost fifteen mil, uh, billion dollars. So the way that it works is that Edison, after paying in its money, which was roughly four billion, can access the fund provided two conditions, three conditions are met. One is that it lodges with the California Public Utilities Commission, a wildfire mitigation plan, which it did. And two, that it substantially complies with that plan. Now that's never been tested, so we don't know what substantially complies means, but obviously we represent all of you, so we have no reason to challenge substantial compliance because we don't want Edison to go bankrupt. We want them to be able to access the fund. And the way that it works is Edison has to pay, this is the third condition, a billion dollars toward the damages. Once it pays a billion dollars, combination of cash and, uh, insurance, then it can receive, uh, reimbursement from the fund and the fund will compensate for the rest of the damages. So even if this is, let's say, an eight billion dollar fire or a ten billion dollar fire, what would happen is Edison would pay the first billion, then the rest would come out of the fund. Now, whether or not that's good policy, we could debate that all day long. I mean, whether or not Edison should have to pay more, all these things we can debate. But as it comes down to all of you, there is virtually no chance that Edison would go bankrupt. The only way they could is if they were found not to have substantially complied or they were found to have been grossly negligent. Um, unless those two things happen, they can access the fund and the fund will completely compensate everyone because there's fifteen billion in it and this is nowhere close to being a fifteen billion dollar fire. Yes. I believe there was a question here. Yes, sir.
How much do you, uh, control the amount of people working on your, your, your business? And are there any issues with, uh, you, something like that? They're not, they're, 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 so, you should, it's not like, maybe it's, 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 but, uh, so, what do you know about that?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. So the, the question was, um, there is, uh, there are a number of people who work from home in Altadena, whether it's a graphic designer or somebody who, uh, is a computer programmer, things like that. So what we can do, um, are twofold. Number one, we can obviously sue for it and we can recover it as part of the lawsuit. But, um, if you have insurance, you should be able to recover the personal property you had in your home, even if it's, say, a computer. Um, and certainly our, um, insurance adjuster can help you with that. You should also be able, if you had a loss, to go to FEMA if it's not insured and seek compensation there. And again, I'm not saying that's the only way to do it, but if you're talking about doing it quickly, then I think the best way to recover it quickly would be either the insurance or FEMA because we can certainly recover it during the suit, but it's going to take some time to do.
But there are, you have, uh, insurance on your business. Nobody, you work from home.
Right.
You're not away from home, you're not going to buy extra insurance on your business. You know, I, I'm, I'm recording studios.
Yeah.
It's all about letting it be, it's all about just, you know, so, you know, they're kind of like, shit, boy, you get your business, this is your home, your business, so, your home business, so, it's, they're going to try and, well.
So, and the question was, what happens when the insurance company, and this is a more involved situation, we have a home recording studio, doesn't pay? So I think there's a couple of things there. I think the first thing to do is to get with, uh, certainly Joel can do it for free, a public adjuster, and try and get the insurance company to pay. If they're not going to pay, then Greg is going to talk in a minute about being able to sue them. The way I would evaluate that is unless there's an exclusion, you should be able to recover for the personal property you had, even if it's used for a business purpose, but you're not going to be able to recover, for example, lost income. Um, that's just, unless you had a business coverage, it's not going to happen. But if you had, because a lot of us have, uh, different, you know, maybe not recording, but you know, we'll have guitars, we'll have instruments, uh, pianos, all kinds of things. And unless they're excluded, you should be able to recover under the policy. So we can certainly help with that. Um, let me, yes, let me take this and then let me answer a couple of questions that, that came in. Yes, ma'am.
My question was, um, is there a limited number of clients or people that you can, uh, get certain numbers and, um, you know, be able to do that?
Okay.
And also, uh, the evidence is, you know, you take it, uh, you take it, uh, and, uh, yeah.
Sure. Okay, so first question, is there a limit to the number of people that we can take? Uh, the answer is no. And that's why we have such a large firm is, is we are set up to take in as many clients as are interested in our services. And that's why, again, we have over four hundred people and, and that's why we do that. The second is, is there an advantage to being a named plaintiff? And the answer is no. Um, all plaintiffs are going to be treated the same. The name plaintiff is generally just, uh, some people do it alphabetically, uh, some people just randomly pick. It, it really doesn't make a difference. Um, yeah, it's, it's not a, an issue at all, so nothing to worry about there. Oh, FEMA did ask, uh, that we announce that they can get people registered now. So if anyone has a loss and wants to go to FEMA and is curious about whether or not they can recover, um, you know, can't hurt to ask. So strongly recommend that. Um, one more question and then I'm going to come over here. Uh, so one of the questions we just got on the chat is, if you take five to six months to decide on a lawyer, is your potential settlement delayed? Uh, I mean, I can't answer definitively, but I can say that we're not going to start submitting demand packets. I mean, we'll start working on them immediately, but we're not going to start submitting them until we get closer to the time that we're actually going to do mediations. Typically, we start submitting them about nine months out. So if you were to take, you know, several weeks or even several months to, to decide on a lawyer, it really won't be a problem as long as you get the information to, uh, either us or your other attorney quickly. The biggest issue we have in terms of providing, uh, demand packets is that we have clients that aren't able to get us the information and that's understandable. I mean, people are going through a million things. Oftentimes they just don't want to think about it, but that's usually the delay is we'll need something that only the client can provide. The client is understandably busy with life and so that will delay it. But in terms of delaying a few weeks or even a few months to make your decision on a lawyer shouldn't have an impact. Yes, ma'am. Great, great question. So the question was, our contact information. So we, um, we have it in the chat for the Zoom, but for people here, uh, we have folks in the back that are wearing the yellow shirts. You can sign up with them. Um, one thing that we do, and, and this is something that, that I really encourage people to do, um, I, I give my cell phone number to all my clients. And not only, um, is it provided initially, but also we do, um, update letters and in every update letter, you'll see my cell phone. I, I do that for a reason and that is that we represent a large number of people, but we want to make sure that every single one of our clients gets the best possible service. So if there's ever a problem with anyone in the organization, uh, the buck stops with me, call me up and I will address it and make sure that the problem is solved. Uh, our, yes, our, our firm is Singleton Schreiber. So we are, um, we're based in California. We have offices all over California, but we also have offices in a number of other states. Looks like a couple more questions. All right. Please. All right. Go ahead. Ah, there we go. Okay, go ahead.
So I just want to clarify, uh, since this is, I think we call it bad action versus bad action. So does that mean that your, you're, you're, you know, so, where, there's literally, you know, there's not thousands of cases going through for it, it's an individual basis?
Yeah, so that, that, it does mean that. In theory, what could happen, and, and when you go to trial, this is how it's set up, is that there could be several thousand cases that are going to go. And so what'll happen, and this is what the judge does when he or she sets a trial date, the judge will solicit input from both the plaintiffs and the defendants and then the judge will make the final decision on a trial plan. What usually happens is that we will organize the plaintiffs into anywhere from six to ten, uh, classifications. So we'll say home loss, we'll say home loss renter, um, wrongful death, um, we'll say soot and ash, uh, business loss. And you put everybody in buckets so that you classify the case. Then the judge will say, okay, we're going to select and they can pick any number they want. Typically, it's between five and ten. And so if you have six different buckets with five people in each, that'll be thirty. And the judge will say, okay, of these thirty cases, I'm going to randomly select five or ten and they're going to go to trial. And so that's what the initial trial will look like. Now again, in all of these cases, what's happened is we've gone through that process and then when we get right up to it, Edison says, no, we're ready to go ahead and settle, so let's get into a mediation protocol. And that's how it works out. But you're right. Theoretically, if Edison were to say, look, we're not settling, we would go to trial. Now, if we went to trial and won, it's very hard to imagine they would want to keep going because trial value is higher than settlement value. Uh, that's why they settle. I mean, if, if it was the same, then nobody would ever settle. So in our settlement, we want to make sure people are fairly compensated, but it's not going to be a home run, you know, those, those verdicts that you read about. That's what happens when you go to trial. They don't want that to happen, which is why if we did get a verdict to go, they would then start settling after that. All right. Oh, uh, there was one question that came in that I saw and it had to do with the Maui. Um, it was a follow-up on what Mr. Brown was talking about in terms of the FEMA program for cleanup. And one thing I wanted to say is, uh, it's fantastic that they're getting started so quickly because often they take a long time. Looks like it's going to be quicker here. And one thing that, uh, Mr. Brown did say is that there are two separate, um, uh, everybody okay? Ah, good. Uh, there are two separate, uh, starting points. There's going to be one in the Palisades and one over here in Altadena. So it's not going to be a situation where they do one first and then the other. They're going to start both and they're going to get that started, uh, hopefully next week. The hope is that it's going to be cleaned up within the next few months and we can get started. Um, the question was, and let me just answer this and then I'll get to you. The question was, in Maui, was there, uh, a delay? There was a delay for a period of time because they didn't know where they were going to put it. Maui is an island and this is a toxic area, but they have since gotten the process started and we've had, uh, a number of our clients get their permits and begin their rebuilding. So we're very happy about that. Yes, ma'am.
Do you, uh, 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 do
is that it doesn't cost you any money. If you decide that you're not going to go with FEMA, you still have to comply with all of the environmental regulations, but you have to pay for it, and even if your insurance is not enough, you then have to come out of pocket. Because of that, I would say 99.9% of my clients go ahead and use the program. You're not obligated to, but that's just something to keep in mind. Okay, I'm getting the hook signal? Yes, go ahead. Yes, so that's a great question. So the way that it works is, if you do not have insurance, then there's no charge at all. If you do have insurance, then what they will do is they will bill your insurance for the debris removal portion only. So if you had, let's say, $30,000 to clean up your structures in debris removal, they would then send that bill to the insurance company, the insurance company would pay them, but you would not be billed at all. All right, let's do one last question, then I'm going to turn it over to Greg. Yes? Yeah. Yes, so what they will do, the question was, the home, and I'm sorry for your loss, the home burned, but there is some part at the beginning, I'm sorry, at the front, that is still standing. So the issue is, what happens there? Yes, they will demolish and remove all of the debris from that. So that's not something you have to worry about. Before I introduce Greg, let me just say that we're putting together these tables. If anybody has any questions, we're going to stick around after this, we'll be available to talk, answer questions. If anybody wants to sign up, they can do that. Very quickly, before I turn this over, let me just say a word about Greg. Greg Bentley is one of the top insurance bad faith lawyers in California. The reason that we selected him is that we wanted to give our clients an option. So for those of you who feel like your insurance company has not been fair with you, and oftentimes, this is something that takes longer time, or if you're concerned about being underinsured, Greg is a wonderful resource. I'll let him tell you about the specifics, but again, he's somebody that we have a ton of confidence in, and we're very happy to be working with him. Greg?
All right, thank you, Jerry. Thank you, everybody, for hanging in there, and I'm sorry to have to be here tonight. What a wonderful setup that you have here and coordinated efforts, so well done. You can see the attention to detail that Jerry and Brett and the team put together is top-notch, first-class. Well, insurance is a unique product. It's something that you purchase for peace of mind, and it's something certainly you never want to use. And with that purchase comes a promise from the insurance company that when there's a loss and you suffer damage, whether it's a disability policy, whether it's a car accident, and in this case, your house is damaged or completely burned, the insurance company needs to step up and to protect you and to honor that promise of making you whole. And frankly, folks, I've been suing insurance companies for 34 years, dating back on the wildfires aspect of it, 2003 from San Diego up through San Bernardino and Arrowhead, 2007, 2010 wildfires, Santa Rosa wildfires. And what we know, and I'm going to give you a little history, what I'm here to talk to you about tonight is what's called underinsurance. And what we know from history and from review of records, as the Departments of Insurance in various states, and including, and really champion, the California Department of Insurance has gathered information, what we know is, the majority, if not all of you, will be woefully underinsured. And so what does that mean? Well, just like the term itself, underinsured means you will not have enough money to rebuild your house based upon the coverage that you have. That means you're underinsured. And so how do we know whether or not you're underinsured? I want to give you just brief, I only have 10 minutes, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time. We put on presentations, you should definitely go to unitedpolicyholders.com, that's a huge resource, we work with them, they are insurance advocates, and they have all kinds of great stuff and information to help you with the presentation of your claim. Our firm is available to assist you in evaluating your policy, but I want to explain to you what underinsurance means and what we're willing to do. And first off, I don't sue utility companies, we're not in this to sue anybody as to cause an origin. If you decide to use their firm, you're in great hands, there's other lawyers that do that. Anything that we do, initially, we're not going to charge. What we want to do is evaluate insurance policies, and I'll explain why, and declarations pages. And if we ever become retained, and I say if, because it may be something that we can't do, and I'm going to explain why, or you may decide you don't want to do it, if we do get involved, we will only be doing it on a contingency basis for amounts above your policy limits, or the latest and final and best offer that they gave you. So we want you to fight your fight, we want you to get fully covered from what insurance you have, but as I know from handling these cases over the years, you will not have enough insurance. How do you know whether or not you do? And there's a bunch of tips, and we're going to be around afterwards, and we'll answer questions, and you can give us your email, and we can give you question, or items that you need to request, and how to get it, and give you resources on handling your claim. We're here to help for that. What you need to do is get a copy of your insurance policy in the declarations page. And fortunately, the California Insurance Code and the California Code of Regulations has all kinds of requirements and mandates for insurance companies on how they need to act in good faith and fair dealing in the handling of claims. They need to be responsive to you, they need to be quick, they need to provide you documents at your request, they need to explain to you what the documents say, what they mean, they need to assist you in the handling of the claim. Prompt, fair, thorough, those are staple points. And so I've heard a lot of the questions, and I can answer some of these, you know, afterwards or later on through correspondence, but there's two types of claims eventually at the end of the day, which none of you have right now. One would be if they just are lowballing you, or they're delaying, or they're refusing to cooperate, or refusing to respond. There's all kinds of codes and regulations, and our firm has all kinds of capable people, and we have the top experts in the field of insurance, we've been doing this for years, that put a microscope on their conduct, because frankly, I'm sick of it, they don't do their job, and they leave people upside down. And that's not what we signed up for when we buy insurance, but we'll look at that for you. The reality is, the reality is, is that what you need to do is get your deck page, it'll show what your coverages are, and you have dwelling, which is the cost to repair or replace, and you have other structures, you know, walls, fences, things like that, and then contents. The two big things typically will be repair or replace your house, and Jerry did a good job explaining the difference, we believe you should rebuild. And then the contents, you're going to need to fill out a proof of loss, there's a lot of stuff that you're going to do, you're going to be overwhelmed. There's public adjusters, make sure you interview, make sure you feel confident with them, don't sign anything immediately, you know, use kind of your smarts on that. We can give you references too, and I know Jerry and Brett have those as well, that we can give you people that we think are responsible. But what you look at is your policy, and let me give you just a two-minute version of the underinsurance issue, so you know what you're up against. These insurance companies, for years, insured under what was called guaranteed replacement cost. And up until the mid-'90s, anybody that had a fire loss, it was rebuilt no matter what. It did not matter, there were no limits, didn't matter what it would cost. Well, there were Oakland wildfires, and then other wildfires nationally, the carriers realized, we have to put caps on this. And so in the late '90s, they went into a replacement cost value, which is what is a limit, because they want to limit their exposure. And in order to come up with that value, and all of you who have insurance know how it works, you call your agent, and it could be someone that's been in the community for 30 years, and then they ask you certain questions, they prepare an estimate, and then the agent will say $600,000. And you go, okay, is that enough to rebuild my house? We're not contractors. Agents say yes, we rely on them. Well, historically now, through all the fires from 2003, after they went to replacement cost value, it is undeniably true that the industry knows that 60% to 70% of people are going to be underinsured by a lot of money. And so what we need to do, because the law really isn't good for insureds, and that's who you guys are in this relationship, the general premise is that the insurance company's going to say, it's not our problem, we told you this was an estimate, and we told you, you need to figure out if this is enough. Well, we look at certain codes and regulations, because in 2010, the California Department of Insurance established regulations that addressed what were clear failures of these estimates and the software that was being utilized industry-wide to lowball. Now, some of you might think, well, why would the insurance company lowball my coverages? Why wouldn't they want to give me more coverage so I would pay more premium? That's not the way it works. They want to insure against calamity, and they want to gain market share. So what we would be willing to do is, if you would like information, we can help you in reviewing your policy, we can give you an email that you can copy and paste to send to your carrier, because there's about six or seven things we specifically need, we know the language to ask for, what they need to produce, and we will review your policies. And then we'll decide if there's a case, because every company has different language in their renewals, and in their deck pages, and in their policies. And we're equipped to look at them, we've looked at them for years, and we can tell you if we can help. So if you're interested, it's super fast, I appreciate everybody hanging in. My name's Greg Bentley, I'll be in the back, we have a couple lawyers here from my firm, and we're equipped to look at your insurance policies and assist you to see if you're underinsured. And then if you are, we're going to go get it, because we think everybody should be made whole, okay? Thank you.
So it's been a long night, and I want to thank you for staying for as long as you have, and I hope the information has been helpful, because going through this type of trauma isn't easy. And so I want to thank you for being here, and we want to be a resource. Whatever you do, don't sell your property, don't fall prey to predatory practices, and there probably are no questions that you have that we can't find someone to answer those questions. It truly is an opportunity to rebuild and be made whole. Our commitment as an organization is to walk this path with you. We are investing staff time, they're going to be here over the next several weeks and months, just so that you have credible information so you can rebuild. The history of this community is important, it is a model, and many people around the country are watching to see what happens in this area, particularly with the history of Altadena. And many of us knew of the history, and know of, and many more would know more about the history because of what has just happened, and the fact that you will build back better. So thank you for your time, your patience, and we look forward to continue to have this dialogue. And one thing to be sure about, we're not forcing anything or any product on anyone. Our job is to try to get you credible information so you can make good decisions for the future of your family and your ability to repair. Pastor, do you want to close us off with a prayer, or? And let's, let's thank this church for opening its doors, for allowing us to do this. Let's thank this congregation for being here from day one, and every night, opening its doors to ensure that people have what they need. Thank you.
While you're clapping, can we clap it up for our president one more time? Please. So let me get you to your tables, everybody by your heads. Look, we thank you for this time, we thank you for the information, we thank you most of all for wisdom. Let us continue, God, to grow in wisdom as we move forward to rebuild and to restore our city. We pray this in your son's name, and all God's people said, amen, 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 amen. Please don't forget the tables, there are questions, you can ask questions, please utilize, and make sure you talk to the folks before you leave if you have more questions.